Okay, I got six point five, I'm gonna go ahead and call me whoever started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Believe me. Next is approval today's agenda.
What's your approval today's agenda?
Paul second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries next to the approval minutes, we don't have any, so approval claims for payment of nine ten twenty twenty five.
Most of the claims you payment, September ten, twenty twenty.
I will second, it's been moving seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries, next is consideration approve the use of courthouse grounds.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the courthouse grounds, it's for Saint Paul Lutheran Church for their annual life change events. And that will be on October fifth, twenty twenty five at two thirty in the afternoon.
I will second. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next is consideration do authorize the Perton County Treasury issue refunds for payment, payments collected under the twenty twenty five drainage assessment for drainage district twenty sixty eight.
I will make a motion to approve the Perton County Treasury to issue those refunds.
I will second, it's been moving seconded, any discussion? Reason is, they got billed for work that wasn't done in their district. So they need reimbursed back. Any other? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next is consideration to approve the cancellation of board of supervisors meeting scheduled for September twenty fourth and November fifth of twenty twenty five.
And we'll make a motion to approve cancellation of those meetings, September twenty fourth and November fifth, twenty twenty.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next is consideration approve authorizing county attorney to execute documents on behalf of Perton County to opt in to the Purdue Pharma Sackler family opioid class action settlement.
Make a motion to approve authorizing the county attorney to execute those documents.
I will second, it's been moving seconded, any discussion? Charlie, you wanna burn about ten minutes?
Two, not ten. Um, this is another opportunity bring some money into the county, Purdue Pharma is in bankruptcy, but they're uh, they made a claim against the Sackler family. Not really sure what the relationship is between the two, but apparently Sackler family has money. So they may have brought a claim against them. So it could be a neighborhood of a billion or more dollars that would be distributed to, you know, government entities in the across the country, and so if we want to be considered, uh, we need to opt in, we have until the end of the month. So I ask that you approve this.
There's no guarantee and there's no overmounts.
No, we don't know, there's no
No way to know.
Way to estimate what this could be, and it would again, like, like the other opioid settlements would trickle in probably over the next several years.
All right, good.
Last question.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can take my name off the comment, citizens comment, because this has to do with this. He said that if we put our name on it, um, it would take several years to, uh, pass. Um, so the, nobody knows how much it is yet. Um, and I assume that we'd have to wait a while to see if we're gonna get any money toward the county or for the state. But at this time, I would recommend if it ever came across, I think that money that would come to the county for these for this lawsuit would be used towards, uh, medical services. Whether it be essential services or supplying medical supplies to each town or equipment, maybe stock in the ambulance or whatever. I would recommend that whenever that comes. I had other questions, but he won't be able to answer because it's not that hard.
All right, well, thank you. Anything else? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next I have is consideration to acknowledge and approve tax abatements.
Okay, I have a tax abatement for the property owned by Justin Mites in Clay Township. It's abating the taxes of two thousand twenty four.
It's an option.
Yes.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries.
I have another one for um, Cynthia Johns. And this is in Benton Heights, addition lot twenty four, block four. And it's also an abatement of the taxes.
It's that motion?
Yes.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
That's actually my property and I know nothing about that. The only thing that I would know is I paid my property taxes and after I did, I found out that they took off the home sit tax for some reason. Is that what this is?
Yes, I believe that's what that was, I, I can't guarantee, but only do you, that's what that was. Was I just get at it or something?
Excution, constant exception, it dropped off the credit. So this is giving you credit back.
Okay.
We, we can keep it though, it's long. All right, next was consideration to acknowledge the auditor's report for August.
Make motion to approve or to acknowledge the receipt of the auditor's mental report for the month of August, the amount of six hundred and seventy four dollars.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Now is the second vote on the resolution twenty twenty five for twenty twenty five dash twenty five, a resolution declaring emergency medical services EMS an essential service in Harden County, Iowa. And we would have to re-invest it, resolution.
Thanks.
Glad you're making a motion.
Yeah, I'm taking motion to approve resolution number twenty five, twenty twenty five dash twenty five. Resolution declaring emergency medical services and essential service in Harden County, Iowa. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital component of public health and safety in Harden County, providing critical care, rapid response, and lifesaving interventions for residents and visitors alike. And whereas EMS providers in Harden County face increasing challenges, including rising service demands, workforce shortages, recruitment and retention difficulties, and funding limitations, particularly in rural communities. And whereas the health and safety of over sixteen thousand residents of Harden County depend on reliable and timely access to EMS, regardless of geographic location or time of day. And whereas pursuant to Iowa code sections four twenty two D and other applicable statutes, counties are authorized to declare EMS an essential service and pursue voter approved sustainable funding solutions. And whereas an inclusive, transparent, and collaborative planning process is necessary to ensure community representation, accountability, and the long-term effectiveness of EMS in Harden County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Harden County Board of Supervisors. One, declaration of essential service, emergency medical services are hereby declared an essential service in Harden County, Iowa. And number two, state level communication, a certified copy of this resolution shall be submitted to the Iowa Attorney General, uh, Iowa General Assembly, the Governor's Office, and the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services to support broader efforts to designate EMS as an essential service statewide.
That was your motion.
That was my motion.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, done, roll call.
All right, aye.
Aye, most carries. I have five minutes yet. Six minutes. Uh, were there any public comments for the meeting?
I'm just, I, I, I think there's, so now there is not.
Okay, you want recess till seven?
Sure. Well, there's a recess. Well, I thought I did, we motioned to recess.
I'll second, it's been moving second to recess till seven o'clock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Seven o'clock. You got the recorder going?
I did.
Okay, I'm gonna reconvene. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on the proposed resolution declaring EMS an essential service in Harden County, uh, we can verify publication, it's up there on the podium, um. Any, uh, written or written statements are up there as well? Uh, have we had any oral?
No.
Written or any more written or oral?
No.
Kind of if anybody else asked. I've had one phone call and they prefer the state change of rules, so. All right, now for the third reading of the resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five, a resolution declaring medical service EMS an essential service in Harden County. Renee, you just read it a minute ago, you wanna do it again? I don't think so, does she?
Wait.
All right. You, you do much better, uh, let's go ahead and take some, uh, public comments. Who, who's along?
Sean, did you want to?
I'm just gonna hang tight for a bit.
Um, and Cindy, you can hear, okay? Can I just sit here?
Well, if I get to the podium, camera gets better.
I'm from Vidic, no more, and I'm just here, um, I'm one hundred percent in support of making EMS an essential service. Um, I've been a healthcare, in healthcare and a nurse for forty seven years now. When I first started, I worked at the hospital in Eldora, and at that time, it was, uh, the ambulance service was volunteer. And that's what a lot of the community were, but really nowadays you don't see that, everybody seems to be paid. Maybe the smaller towns might have to volunteer, but not now. Um, I really feel that needs to be essential service, and I feel that many people in our community don't realize that it's an essential, that it's not an essential service. They don't realize that when they call nine one one, that an ambulance does not have to show. But I've never seen Eldora turn anybody down, um, the only way that Eldora doesn't go is if they're out of town and they have to call that vending or all applause. Um, I've had some people, of course, everybody knows that a lot of people don't realize that it's not an essential service. I've had several people say to me, oh, that's okay, we'll just come up to your clinic, work at the clinic here in town. We'll come up to your clinic, you'll take good care of us, and I said, no, I prefer you didn't because, um, you know, if you have an emergency going on, if you're having a heart attack, um, I'm not gonna be able to do for you what you need. It would be better if you called the ambulance. If you walked in, I, it's not that I wouldn't take care of you, but I don't have the equipment needed. I have an AED, so I can give shocks if I needed to do CPR. Um, I have an EKG machine, I have oxygen, I could start an IV if I needed to. But I don't have the other supplies, I have no labs, I have no X-rays, I have no emergency medicines to give if somebody would go into cardiac arrest. I don't have the equipment, the ambulance has, they can intubate if they need, they've got the compression if CPR is going on. But in my clinic, we do not stock all the medicines needed for an emergency. And so we're wasting precious time for these people that think that they can walk or come to the clinic, when really they should be calling an ambulance instead. And, you know, I think it's really important that we make it an essential service, so they know that an ambulance will show up when it's needed. Um, we've had to call the ambulance several times to come to the clinic, you know, to help us if there's somebody there having health problems. And most of the time our Eldora ambulance has came. Um, there's only been a couple of times where we've had to wait for our falls to come because our ambulance is out of town in Eldora. Um, and yes, we do take care of the patient, we do what we can in our clinic with what we have. Um, so I mean, I, I think we need to make an essential service, we need the money to help, uh, supplies, equipment that all these departments need in various towns to help get the ambulance staffed. Um, and I, I haven't came to any of the meetings because I've worked the last two meetings that you guys. And I understand there's a lot of people that do wanna make it an essential service. Um, and I for one, I would volunteer to be on a committee if any is needed. I work full time, so you know, it's hard for me to do during the daytime. But if any help is needed, I would be glad to serve on a committee if needed. Thank you.
Yes.
Lisa.
Hello, I am Lisa Waller, a torn race here in Harden County. Solid giver specifically, and I currently live in New Orleans. EMS, oops, hold on. EMS, emergency medical service is essential in rural America, especially when cuts to Medicaid and Medicare are imminent. We may not have a hospital in the county in the future, and, uh, so EMS will be, um, integral to, um, rural life. Those cuts will also affect EMS's ability to operate at all. To prepare us for the future, making EMS an essential service is necessary. Questions to work on as we move forward in this endeavor are, one, how much did EMS cost in the county last year? Two, what total dollar amount does seventy five cents for a thousand dollars in assessed property value bring in? Three, if the essential services tax does not cover costs to run EMS, where does the remainder come from? Four, will property owners in cities that already have EMS be taxed twice? Five, with, with question number four in mind, is there a better way to fund EMS under the essential moniker than saddling property owners only? I fully support making EMS an essential service. Let's make this happen in a way that is fair and sustainable for years to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I don't have anybody else?
Anything ready?
Question, so this makes the third vote, yes?
Third public hearing.
Third public hearing, okay. Third public hearing, and then you guys being board of supervisors, what has to follow past this?
We would vote to approve the third. And then we would then appoint the, uh, committee, correct?
Yep, the advisory council.
So that doesn't come until you guys have voted, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, and that vote will come?
Probably next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay, and then how long would it take for a committee after that vote? If it's approved? For a committee? Do we know that?
Well, I would, I would assume we'd form the committee that right following that vote.
Okay. And how long is committee gonna be given, is there a timeframe given to that said committee on when a decision to bring back to you guys? As to what?
No.
The county decides there's no time.
No, uh, the only, the only thing that'd be restricting you would be the ability to get it on for a referendum. And I believe it's too late to even get it on this year's. So it wouldn't even be on till next year. So I'd say your timeframe's probably about ten months at the longest, if you want it on for next year's referendum.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to address something please mentioned, Iowa code does allow two forms of funding. One, the property tax, the other one, the income surfer. So you could choose either or a combination of according to.
So we have to know how many, how much income?
Right, yeah.
Oh, you can pass some of these.
No, that's.
So sales, about sales tax, so?
If the code that I read was an income surtax or a property tax, well, was the two choices. I could stand and correct it, but I think that's what it is.
Do many other counties in the state do it by the surtax?
Well, I'm not, we're.
That's probably all tax. But I can't totally waste.
Interesting, thank you.
Yes.
So say that, um, uh, EMS services in this county costs two million a year, and the surtax, or does the social services property tax only reason, like two million? Where does the other eight hundred thousand come from?
The short answer is, same place it's coming right now.
And that's from people that have Medicaid, Medicare that can pay for?
No, no, no. The cities that are supplying the service.
Well, so say that I will follow this thing some way.
Seven ninety five.
Seven hundred ninety five thousand for, so would they? So whatever is left over, the eight hundred thousand would be split evenly among the states, it's a surtax.
That's for the advisory councils and and with those a lot, I think is the correct answer.
And yet we don't make that decision, no.
So I know on, on the social media board, we've got a few comments, people have made comments referencing, uh, if they look at EMS, it's going to be making money, and I, I guess, anybody please help me understand, I wouldn't think that EMS would be designed to make money, I would think it would break even point, you're here to support the public. Um, anybody please correct me, I just, I, I don't understand the logic behind making money. I mean, breaking even is where I would think we would wanna be, not there to make money. I mean, yes, everything needs to have an income to make things work out in the community, I get that, but is it thought of, do people think of it as something that should be making money for the county? Is that what, anybody see it that way? I'm just asking a question, why couldn't people afford that? I'm, I'm just saying, when I read something, and I I guess it could be for profit, but then I would think that people would look down on that because we're paying.
There wouldn't, I mean, it my personal opinion is that's only a state or if you tell us. If you assume for a benefit, you collected more property tax than is needed to support all the EMS in the county. The rest of it would stay in the fund where it came from. And then looked at the following years, uh, how that's divvied out, so if there was more money collected that was needed, it would stay in that fund within the county. And they couldn't use it for anything else. So in future years theoretically, it's a lower fee if you wanted.
If, if the fund builds higher than it needs to build, that, that would be petition to.
So hopefully, the committee will determine, can determine pretty close what it takes to do that, is what whether it would be necessary.
Or I think you could also put it in, the commission could put it in as a sunset that it would be looked at again after so many years.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not on the hands of the people to petition it, it just gave it automatically be brought back up again.
Now, as far as the community of individuals gathered, it's the mayor's decision as to be on it, is that just the, that is the surrounding mayors of all those involved in Harden County? Or is this just two, one individual to select?
I don't know if it'd be the mayors or the city councils, who, who would decide who their member is. If, if that's the committee we put, pick like, I'll pick on Eldora, I don't know if it'd be the city council, the the council itself picks or the mayor picks, I, I wouldn't know, Carrie.
Hey, good, Carrie Callaway from Eldora, um, I just happen to be a current council member. And the way, the way we've done it is the mayor appointed and then the council approved that appointment. Um, we also took into consideration that the EMS commission um, made the recommendation to the supervisors that EMS professionals from the different entities be included. So our current representative is actually our acting EMS director. Uh, at the last public hearing, I believe Lance, uh, that BJ said that a commit, or a community could potentially have an EMS representative as well as a community representative, so they, if they so choose. Um, and then also for those of you who maybe are new to the discussion, the township represent, the township, uh, stewards, boards of trustees will also have someone, so this will be quite a large subcommittee to begin with to ensure that every entity and every community that is currently being taxed in some various way has a voice on this advisory board.
I don't think an ambulance service will ever be a moneymaker in this area anyway, um. As to answer your question here, we have two ambulance people here and council members, so they can correct my wrong. So we're not going to make any money, but some of the money that comes in is from the going of the use of the ambulance by people. But I can tell you that you'll never get hundred percent of what you're billed, you're lucky to even get fifty percent probably of what you, of what's billed, if you're running for a thousand dollars, you're probably gonna get money out of it. It also depends what's used in the ambulance, equipment, medications, whatever. And the only other thing, or one of the other things I should say is, sometimes the ambulances can apply grant money. And those grant monies can be purchased in equipments, AEDs, or whatever. The, if you want something here.
Yep, so, another thing to mention is that should the county and the citizens of Harden County decide that EMS as an essential service should be come to fruition, it does not mean automatically that we have to go to one county run entity. It could be that there is funding that gets allocated to existing entities. Uh, that again would be part of the recommendation on the referendum that the committee or the advisory board puts together. I just wanted to clarify, I know there's been some discussion about that, that the code does not require us to go one way or another.
The other thing that could happen when she's talking about that is, um, and that's in the future if words ever comes, but let's just say that if it passes, it may be a board or falls because really only two paramedic services may get, let's say thirty percent each, so there's sixty percent of the money coming in, and the other forty percent could be used divided among like the small towns, whether it's Accra, St. John's, any of the other small towns. And just because they don't have active ambulance service or paramedics, doesn't mean that they can't have a share of that money to buy the equipment to make it like first responder, make sure it's for them, so they can help until the paramedics do it. So I think people think that it's only going to go to one or two locations, whereas I know it has to be decided on, but I think it should be used for every community in the county who can help keep up their department.
Question will ask, thank you, who wants the decisions made, just say for the sake of argument, it's approved, and it gets moved forward, and it's decided, yes, we wanna do this, who will be, who, who, who will be looking over this money? Will we make the decision as to where the funds go to?
That's an answer for the referendum.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
The advisory council?
The council themselves.
That's kind of spelled out, and I will, we got how that is. One. But hopefully the referendum will be spelled out well enough that that's all predetermined. And there's not too many decisions that need to be made, that there's some kind of formulas put in there that could be in place. So there's not a lot of gray area, nobody's wondering about why and how any funds would get dispersed.
Okay, I just know that's gonna be everybody, every taxpayer's mind about this essential services, cause it's called understanding, and I know there's a ton of variables that go into this, but understanding who's controlling that money and like it's been mentioned, what is essential services, and we call it essential, but we're being recorded, yes, Lynn, so we, okay, so the essential part is that it is by making it essential, is that it becomes a guaranteed services within our Harden County. And I think a lot of folks, I know, my wife's talked to people in the grocery store and other people that I've talked to, they don't understand that, they didn't, they didn't get that point, I don't hope the city here probably understand that, but the vast majority of people don't know that. You know, because, and if you, those I know when we go turn our, and I used this the last time I spoke, when you turn on tap, like you're expecting whoever come up, you press nine one one, you hope that whoever you're calling for gets an ambulance most hit, and then you gotta be able to look yourself in the mirror at the end of the day and say, I didn't vote on this because I was, you know, it's not worth a few bucks. Until it involves me and somebody broke one laying on the ground because I want to save a few dollars. And I think that's what needs, you know, I, because I know I'm being recorded, and that, and that, I think that's what our county really needs to understand, it needs to be essential so it becomes a guaranteed service.
What, what do you mean by guaranteed? That's, that means we have.
Taxes coming forward then, then we know that we have the people paid more paid.
If there's five ambulances and ten emergencies, who gets the five? There's no guarantee that you're gonna get that fifth.
I guess what I mean by guaranteed is. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about the fact that we have. Or that we have people in place, now, there's always catastrophes around the world, you never know, it's called an accident for a reason. What I say guarantee is the money's there. To provide for those people in the time of need. Yes, there could be a hypothetical situation when all the stars line up perfectly, this person over here doesn't get that cert- doesn't get that emergency. Does the other, all five would be used, what I mean by guaranteed services that it's locked and loaded. Pull the trigger and we know that there's people ready to come, it's a promise because. You're paying into the system to make it work. And to that question, how do you know guarantee, you can't guarantee anything in life, but if you don't put it in position. You don't know, you don't know until until you've made it happen, we put it here, now it's. It's kind of like I can't guarantee when I push, go on my coffee pot, it's gonna work, things happen. Okay, there's hypotheticals all day long, so, but by by funding it. You know there's money been put aside, that's the deal here, we know that we funded the system. Right now it's not funded, there is no money, as I was told, that's what I mean by guarantee, it's funded, there's money available. And hope that the time comes, when you press nine one one. An ambulance is gonna show up with trained personnel that have proper equipment to do the job to save the life of me.
It's currently funded. EMS is currently funded.
It is not legally funded.
Yes, it is.
Not according to it, not according to government, not according to cap, not.
County is currently not involved.
That's what I mean.
This is in the city of Hubbard is.
How is it funded?
By tax dollars, the city.
But do our county people know that? Cuz I. People, we've never not had any. Yes, we have a lot of volunteers, but under the code, is it a guaranteed service, is it, is it legally a guaranteed service?
John, to your point, I think what you're trying to say is that at any given time, the. City, like the city of Eldora. Could choose to say we are no longer funding this and there is nothing that legally requires us to not take that course of action. If we choose we're not going to fund it, we aren't gonna fund it, and I think that's what you're saying. Whereas like we can, we can say that about fire, but there is a state code that requires us to at least sign a twenty eighty agreement with a fire department. To provide our citizens coverage.
Thank you.
There is no here, there is no higher law that prevents us from cutting EMS, should we choose.
So I think most citizens in Harden County think that we have EMS like we have fire and police. And that's not a true statement.
No, that's very true, we've never not had a. Did this make, if 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 Eldora can't afford it even after this vote or even after this passes. Does that mean Eldora can just quit or you have to force them to be there?
Undetermined.
There you go. But it's. Same, so same scenario.
Yep.
Whether we fund it or not.
I think if it is an essential service, and let's just, this is just saying, let's just say it was an essential service, some happened, a war couldn't afford it. If it's an essential service and you call nine one one. An ambulance service in Harden County will respond, probably Iowa Falls and if Eldora is not there, because since it's an essential service. Somebody has to respond, necessarily it will be outdoors, but somebody will.
What? State code. Does. Is allows for a referendum. That needs to be approved by sixty percent of the voters, correct me if I'm mistaken. Passing sixty percent of the voters. That allows for taxation either on property values. Or an income surtax or a combination of the two. That would then be dispersed throughout the county. To support EMS services, that in a nutshell is what this is about. That would be a commission that would be appointed. Or at least approved by the supervisors on what that commission, whether it's three person, five person, whatever it is. But the referendum hopefully would spell out very clearly how it was going to be distributed. So there wouldn't be a lot of decision making on their part, they would be more of a watchdog type. Situation, be able to report to the public what came in, what went out, the guy, those kind of things. So I think that's essentially what this is about.
Yeah, Dave's way, uh, what essential services does is a dedicated funding source for EMS. Uh, in the same way it does for fire and law enforcement, it doesn't specifically spell out how a township, for example, has to provide that fire protection. We know that some of our fire departments struggle with the same kind of issues EMS does, it doesn't mean they have to provide a. Twenty four seven staffed fire department, but they have to make some provision for that to happen. And and that's currently what all of our communities are doing in one way or another, they have made provisions for EMS. What this would do is is allow that dedicated funding stream. Um, just for some context, uh, because it came up about for profit ambulances. Prior to March of twenty nineteen, Iowa Falls was covered by a for-profit ambulance service, American Medical Response. Uh, and had been covered by a for-profit service for twenty five plus years. Um, they chose not to remain in Iowa Falls, they still remain in other communities in Iowa. So obviously there are ways to make money and make it profitable to do EMS. Um, in my opinion, sometimes those companies don't make necessarily the best choices for the citizens that they serve. Because they have to cut corners somewhere to be able to to make it profitable. So I'm personally of the opinion, that's not the way to go, for profit EMS is is not the right choice, um. So one of the challenges I think we have when we talk about essential services in Harden County, for example, is. Iowa Falls in twenty nineteen started their own ambulance service, essentially. They declared it an essential service, they said, we're gonna put the money in to make this happen. Obviously there were startup costs, those are being paid back through some geobonds that they have the ability to fuck with. But operationally, since we started in March of twenty nineteen, Iowa Falls EMS has operated in the black each year. Uh, over the last six years, um, that amount is about seven hundred and four thousand dollars in the black. That's without, that's not taking in any of the franchise fee that was approved at the time they started. Uh, the ambulance service that would allow, I I think that's in the neighborhood of seventy five to a hundred thousand dollars annually through that. Franchise fee, one percent, uh, that hasn't had to be realized to. To make our budget, and so that one is just going into our capital improvement fund, which can then fund the purchase of new ambulances. When those kind of needs come up, so I don't wanna speak for the mayor or the city leaders in Iowa Falls, but I know that. Mayor Emerson is on record with a written comment that he submitted, saying that it's it's a real challenge for Iowa Falls right now to think about. Taxing their citizens again when they're already providing a a service. And have that franchise fee in place, um, and are not losing money, so there's the question for them is. What happens if essential services passes and all of our citizens are now being taxed for EMS? Which we're already providing, then do those funds go to support other communities that haven't been able to find. Uh, the right combination, the right system to make it work for their particular, um, scenario, their call volumes, their needs. Um, those are real questions that I think will have to be dealt with by this advisory board. And that's why I think it's really, really important that we have, uh, EMS professionals on on this committee. Uh, from each of our services and not just Iowa Falls and Eldora that have full-time, you know, paid employees. But also our first responder services, uh, because they are an essential part of our EMS system. If we didn't have our first responders, if we didn't have Union Hubbard and Radcliffe ambulances, the B L S ambulances. It would put a sprayer on the system, make it very difficult to need to leave the pardon avenue. So, you know, that's what's hard about EMS essential services, it has to be done at the county level. But we aren't operating with the countywide system right now, we're operating with communities that are funding EMS. So that's where it becomes really difficult to figure out. How do we take this tax money and divide that out amongst all of these different entities? If we were Dallas County where Kristen is the EMS director, they have Dallas County EMS. They don't have essential services, but they have a lot of other tests for new ones to fund EMS with. But it's easy, that's a no brainer, if they needed essential services and they got it passed, they know that money is gonna go. Um, so there's a lot of challenges ahead of us, I think, in the next ten months. But I'm hopeful, um, that we can continue to kind of move this forward and at least really take a serious look at EMS as a county. Which hasn't really been done before.
If if we have a countywide levy though. If there's a countywide levy for EMS, then would cities have, would they still have to levy? And I would think if they did, they wouldn't have to levy near as much as they currently are if they have a countywide levy.
So you're saying like they could replace it, so Iowa Falls could say instead of the franchise fee, yeah, absolutely.
So it wouldn't be like being taxed twice, they wouldn't have to do the other.
Correct.
I would, I would look at this, if you don't mind, it's funny, you have a franchise fee. In Iowa Falls that provides funding for EMS, correct? Is that part of your seven hundred thousand?
No, it's not.
So. Your service is making, has made seven hundred thousand the last six years without the franchise track. So that is set in building and upon?
Yeah, that goes into the C I P, basically it all moves over into that C I P fund and then there's money there to buy ambulances, so that. Yes, correct.
So that. Pays for the, the capital improvements on all those things, so it essentially goes to.
Yes, it does, but. I guess wouldn't necessarily have to, it's all part of the general fund, so if the fire department had a need, it could go to the fire department, for example.
But to Renee's point. In theory at least, and same in Eldora, we don't have a franchise fee, but it's part of the general fund and it's part of the toll passing. That if this were, if you just assume for a minute, there was enough funding countywide to fund everybody's organization. Theoretically, you could do it, Iowa Falls could move in with franchise fee. Theoretically, Eldora could lower their tax last fee.
And I would think the, I mean, the levy rate would have to be smaller as a countywide levy rate. But still, so the.
And same, the same goes for Steamboat or Hubbard. Fire. No, right, but your city also. Or who buys your equipment?
Uh, foundation, fire department.
So the city does not require any funds?
They they house it and mainly.
Insurance. Okay, so there's some at least. So that's what the committee's gonna need to really dig in.
Pays out of course, but no matter how I do it. But make make profit.
Well, but that's, to me that, we have the guys that are especially.
And so like, it's still a question, it's like, so how much was the cost during the EMS year? And that, and will the, will the, the essential services make that much money anyway? You know?
And it will, it will. But we gotta make sure we're all all talking apples for apples because we got a seven hundred thousand dollar profit. How much of the franchise fee provided over that six year period?
Um, I don't know about exactly number of this, I think seventy five to a hundred thousand, similar.
Corey, you mentioned a geo bond. So how much was the geo bond for?
So the startup costs were a little under a million dollars.
Is that that you don't pay back, that just gets paid back through the?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Perhaps a worthwhile exercise of the committee would be to get a starting point for every entity we currently have. What is your budget breakdown for the services you provide, including staffing, equipment? Grants, fundraisers, all of that, so that when we do kind of the level set of here's the current picture in the county and we factor in. What those budgets look like and what's currently being handled for each entity. Just a suggestion for the committee. As maybe a starting.
Sure, and it all goes to.
Absolutely.
Population density in the area that you're covering and obviously even more advanced the population. Theoretic and a little bit more efficient.
Well, and just for example, I know like some communities put their staffing in the general fund, some have it elsewhere, another one has it. So just as apples to apples, like you said, to make sure we're all looking at the same stuff would be a good thing to consider.
One thing that hasn't been brought up. In my mind. What, the way I look at this. And Kevin's just here sitting here all. If your dad might call for an ambulance. They're gonna get one in four, five, six, ten minutes coming from Eldora, right? If I call for one at my house in town, I'm gonna get one in four or five minutes from Eldora. I'm supporting financially the one in Eldora through my city taxes. And I'm not picking on your dad, so, but you can go tell him I said this, but he's not supporting today. Financially.
When they, when they send the ambulance or the ambulance ride.
No, he does, he does, if if that all broke even. That's fine. But he's not, and I'm just picking on him, we take anybody out of the center. With the exception of a few townships, right now, they're not financially supporting the EMS. So like now, there's two or three townships, I believe that there's an exception to that. But it's pretty minor in the whole county, so it's.
It'll get worse because Medicaid Medicare cover the simplest people.
Well, no, I understand that, and, yeah, but I'm just saying. Somebody outside of the city of Eldora. Gets the same service as I do, but they're not. Contributing to the funding. No, no, I understand that, no, I, and I, same could be said to Kim, right? Same could be said for for any of the, either one of the A O I services.
So the actual service is paid by the, by Medicaid Medicare health insurance, right, but the actual like the. Um, housing and the. Yeah, salaries are paid by the people that pay the taxes.
Yeah, so so in Iowa Falls, we inherited from E M R, because they were a for-profit company, they couldn't receive any taxation. So none of the townships had been paying anything for EMS, in fact, say my boss had been paying for EMS for about twenty five years. Which is why they felt pretty okay with making the big investment they had to make when they, when they did that, um, but for us. My staffing model does not change because I cover Alden and Buckeye, for example. My staffing model will be the same, so I don't see that as a burden to cover those communities, because when I go to those communities. We bill those patients for those services and we we recoup money that way. So that's just a different, a little bit different way to to look at it, you could look at it and say, well, they're not paying anything for the service. But also the revenue that we make from those communities also helps our bottom line at the end of the day. Um, and without that revenue, you know, we wouldn't have the positive bottom line that we do.
So in summary, there's a lot of work that the committee to do if you guys heard this on your.
Buckeye doesn't charge. We don't receive a fee, when our, when our ambulance goes out as a first responder unit, we don't collect a dime from anybody. They're basically funded by the money from the city, they'll give us so much a year to work off of. But we basically run off of donations, the community that gives us money, should we have a fundraiser, a dance, or a steak fryer. Whatever, and I'm pretty sure that, um, the union is the same way. So, yes, Iowa Falls will come and be our advanced life support group coming in, they're the ones that can bill a patient, we don't get any.
So. Sorry, ma'am, can I get your name just for my?
Suzanne Wervey.
Thanks, Suzanne.
And going back, I apologize to everybody, I I tend to be a little, huh, when I. When I've done the research, not to the degree that some of your folks in here did this. I'm a veteran and when, when you say you argue the point whether it's guaranteed, so military mindset here, forgive me a little bit. You can never prepare, you can prepare until you're blue in the face, there's nothing saying it's gonna go as you like in our world. It just, anytime we ever prepared for an ops mission, there's a ninety nine percent chance something's gonna go awry. And I I can appreciate what you're saying, sir, you can never guarantee anything in this world, but if you don't prior plan. You're already done, if you do not prepare, and that is make this essential, put the planning in place. Have things at the ready, there's always a problem. There's always a probability that something might go really bad. Okay, and out of your, out of your capability of handling it. So. As an N C O on the military, I was given my orders. I tell my men and women, let's go. And it would be five minutes out the door and something went haywire. You lost com, something. So you can never prepare. You try and prepare the best you can by doing your due diligence and that's what this is about. Hope communicating with those people in our county saying, this is what we want to do. This is why we want to do it. To make it an essential service. So we can do our level best and have the funding, that need. How that comes, how it's distributed, that'll come in the future. But you gotta do some prior planning. If you don't, you're fail, out the gate. So.
Any other public comments?
I, I have a positive thing I'd like to add. Possibly.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say that while it may not always feel like it. We have a great EMS system in Hardin County. Compared to many other counties, some very nearby counties. Our EMS system is much more developed and robust. And we can be thankful for that. We can thank the, the volunteers on our first responder services and our B L S services. The committed employees on the two A L S services in the county for all the effort that they put in. But we really are in a pretty good place. A lot of counties that are working towards essential services or have just gotten it in place. Did it because they didn't have any ambulance service to speak of in their county. So thankfully, that's not where, we're coming at it from much more of a position of strength. Can we do better? Obviously, we can always do better. We can always be stronger. There's always better ways to, to do things. But we have a good system in this county. We just need to find ways to make sure we're able to support it and encourage it.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Are there any other counties that have already made their EMS? There's, yeah. There, we're in the other.
There are actually twenty-one now.
Oh, twenty-one?
Yes.
And there's another county that I'm familiar with, cause I know one of the supervisors there and I used to live there, but. Calhoun County is going through this right now. They actually have it on a ballot for this fall. But Lake City Hospital, which is the only hospital in the county. Have always furnished those services and they are discontinuing that. So they were set in there. They had to decide what, how they were gonna do it. The city of Lake City have been, they're taking over that EMS service. In the city of Lake City. But they need funding from the county to do that. So they're right across the middle of this, too. So there's a million different reasons why it happens. So they were gonna be without managers.
Totally.
Totally. Without an A L S, they still had the, the B L S services, but they didn't have any advanced life support services. Other than what was furnished by Lake City Hospital.
Okay.
And I think that's a great point. And so, sorry, I wanted to be positive. No, I'm gonna give a little negative. I'm really concerned about what might happen to Hanson Family Hospital and even Reddy County Memorial Hospital. Because if, if we lose Hanson Family Hospital in this county. That changes the game completely for EMS.
Mm-hmm.
And there will be almost no way that we would ever have enough tax dollars to support a system that would be robust enough to meet the needs of this county. If we had to transport every single patient that calls nine one one. Forty-five minutes to an hour or more away. Because with that kind of turnaround time, we would have to have at least double the amount of crews we currently staff. That's not reasonable. It's, it, that's not possible.
Excellent.
So we, we need to find a way to make sure that we do not let our legislators. Destroy our critical access hospitals because that would be catastrophic for places like Hardin County.
Any other comments? Up here, no more. I can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, close the public hearing.
All second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Very none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most cheers. We closed, we are closed. Well, all I got left is BJ, forgot you're there. Uh, other business, BJ?
No, sir. I appreciate all the great dialogue.
Any other business, Jolene? Thank you, Deb. Public comments at all? I can ask for, for German.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Very none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We are adjourned and it is.
Seven forty.
Seven forty-five. All right, thanks BJ.